Consciousness looks like through your son. Sometimes it involves action that speaks louder than words. Other times, words are the vehicle for which we can instill life or death in people's lives. Guide our leaders with their words and actions of truth. Help the community understand that this gift of truth can be a blessing and a curse. God of commitment, we thank you for staying the course of going to the cross and rising from the dead. We know the joy of what has and will come is what kept you on the journey for all of us. Secure our leaders to the work of suffering and protecting us to the community they serve. Help the community realize the weight of this vocation, which is for the benefit of all people. Almighty God, we lift up all who govern, legislate, and protect Concordia and other nearby cities within Kansas. May those who hold power understand that it is a trust from you to be used, not for personal glory or profit, but for the service of the people. Drive from us cynicism, selfishness, and corruptions. Grant in your mercy just and honest government and give us grace to live together in unity and peace. Through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary? Mrs. Toman?
Constitution Week is the commemoration of America's most important document. It is celebrated annually during the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third. The local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution is asking that the city of Concordia recognize the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week.
Do you want me to read the?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Would you read the proclamation?
I will.
Thank you. And afterwards, we will have Concordia Elementary School students recite the preamble.
Mrs. Toman, do you have a copy of that? I thought I had one.
I do, Madam Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand sixteen marks the two-hundred-twenty-ninth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, now therefore, I, Kristi Hash, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of City of Concordia in the state of Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through twenty-three as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness thereof, I heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the Concordia to be affixed this twenty-first day of September of the year of our Lord, two thousand sixteen. I'll sign it. And...
We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, to ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And thank you, fourth grade teachers and administration. I enjoy seeing you here and will see you again at least when you're in... seniors in high school. And thank you to the parents who made the time in your schedules. I know that it's always a busy time, right after school and before church on Wednesday nights, so... Takes a commitment from you as well. Okay, we'll carry on with our agenda, starting with the approval of minutes from the September seventh, two thousand sixteen.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, before proceeding, I'd like to ask you to add to the agenda an executive session to discuss confidential business data after the comments.
Okay. All right, good. Anything else? All right.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the September seventh, two thousand sixteen meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Lyle and seconded by Chuck that we approve the minutes of the September seventh, two thousand sixteen meeting. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Approval of minutes for the September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen special meeting.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Sam and seconded by Lyle that we approve the minutes of the September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen special meeting. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to financial matters appropriation ordinance number seventeen. I had a question on sixty-three, sixty-three, five sixty-three, the overpayment to Solomon Township.
That's my fault. When I sent them the second, the bill for the second half, I got it mixed up with next year's amount, and so I gave them the wrong amount. There's, we have another one. There's actually, there is two, okay. Yeah, two people paid that wrong amount, and next year's is higher, so...
And that's for the agglom services, right? I'll move to approve ordinance number seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved by Tim and seconded by Sam that we approve appropriation ordinance number seventeen. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to public comments. This is the time during our meeting when if anyone has anything they wish to bring before the commission, they're welcome to do so. Boy, we can clear a room, can't we?
It's my fault.
Yeah, it was you.
I think I was late last year when they did that.
It's because you have to look so hard for a parking spot.
Yeah.
Let's move on to new business. Chamber of Commerce CMB license for Fall Fest.
As noted by the memo, the Chamber requests a temporary license to serve beer at Broadway Plaza on Fall Fest evening.
Larry, I have a question. That last statement there on, was it page forty-four? Does this ordinance allow, I mean, allows for the consumption of alcoholic beverages at the plaza? Anytime, anybody?
The way that works, well, it, not anytime, anybody, but as permitted specifically by the city manager or the events director for the chamber. So it's not just open for alcohol all the time. So there's a two-step deal there, really. You have to have permission for a specific date, basically going through Cloud Corp now as their agent. And then we can permit people to just have a B Y O, which is something we'd probably do like for a football game or something like that. Or if you want to sell, then you also have to have from the city a CMB license, or if you're selling something alcoholic beverages, not three-two beer from the state.
Okay.
So it's, three different ways to do it. But no, it's not ordinarily just open for consumption. It's when permitted
Okay, didn't think so.
by a specific authority.
I mean, just the way that last sentence written, that's... With your, with your permission or with, you know, their request to you to get permission, then all three of those places can have it.
That's correct.
Can people bring it on, onsite?
Only, only when there have, a particular day has been designated or an event has been designated for them.
Okay.
They can. Or, and, or if there's somebody who has the place reserved and is selling it, then we wouldn't allow people to just bring it on also. But you can't just go over there any day of the week with a six-pack. It has to be out of time when it's been authorized.
Okay. Otherwise, they have to purchase it onsite.
Well, or, okay. If it's just your basic ordinary Wednesday and the gates are open and it's a park, okay? You can't, alcoholic beverages are not allowed at that time. If we're having an event like, say, we're showing a football game on the screen, the gates are open, anybody can come and watch, and you can bring in your alcoholic beverages if you want to do it. Or we're having a closed event, somebody's got a reserve for a wedding, they can drink whatever they want. We can permit that. Or if somebody wants to sell it like this, then we can permit them on a specific occasion to sell it within the confines of the plaza. If we're going to have somebody permitted to sell, then we wouldn't also allow, bring your own.
Okay, and signs are being posted and stuff like that. Okay.
I'll move to approve the Chamber of Commerce CMB license for Fall Fest two thousand sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved by Lyle and seconded by Chuck that we approve the cereal malt beverage license for Fall Fest for the Chamber of Commerce. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Demo program application.
Mayor Commissioners, this is an application by Evan Mannenhall for residential structure at one oh three Strain Avenue. You can see the pictures in there. I didn't even bother going inside of it. I've known this house to be empty for a lot of years, and it's been slowly deteriorating away. And now the current owner has taken upon himself to get into the demo program, to get it taken care of, so it's a, it's a good thing.
Is this the Warren Bruno that caught on fire about seven, eight years ago? And what is?
Not in my time, that I remember. I think it was on down.
Okay. But didn't he have a house that, that caught on fire everywhere?
Perhaps. He owns a few in that area, rentals and things.
Does he have a plan for the lot, do you think?
I think the long-term plan for all those lots is for Larry Nadye to store his hay on there and farm it. He bought the other three, remember, in the demo program a few years back and cleared them, and that was a nightmare, a mess down there. That went a long ways cleaning up. He bought that on, bought three properties on the sheriff's sale and had them moved.
So that's on?
Two left after this that are in pretty sad, sick on that particular spot.
That's on the north side of the street, isn't it?
North side of the Strain Avenue, yes, on the west, on the stream east end. Yeah, and, and the back property line of this property would actually be the city limits, the north city limits, yeah. And then it goes into a field, I think that Nadye's own farm. And then to the east is Rex's, his land out in the flood plain there, so...
I'll move to accept one oh three strain into the demo program based on the bid from Wade Excavating for five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved by Tim and seconded by Lyle to accept the property at one oh three strain into the demo program with the bid from Wade Excavating for five thousand eight hundred dollars. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Managers report.
It'll be our shortest evening in a while.
I was gonna say.
I, could you put the leader's grant up there, please? I believe I may have sent this to you. So this is a grant that I'm interested in applying for, put on by the Kansas Leadership Center. That's in Wichita. I think it's part of the Kansas Health Foundation's operations. I think they have a new facility downtown they built for this. I haven't been to any of their programs. Their kind of entry level or most popular program is a two-and-a-half day, three-day session, I guess, starts at ten o'clock or ten thirty one morning and then goes that day and all the next day until noon the next day. And they're offering, and I haven't seen these before, grants to communities for twenty-five thousand dollars would pay for forty members to participate in the program, or fifty thousand for eighty members. I'm looking at the twenty-five thousand dollar level and at possible participation by elected officials and senior staff of the city, the county, the school district, and the college. The hospital has just embarked upon their own leadership and management training thing, so they weren't interested. But the college and the school system have both mentioned their interest in this. So that's what we're looking at. The dates are on there somewhere. There's three dates, maybe in the next page. There you go. So they offer this program three times, one in February, one in March, one in April. They, the scholarship pays for the cost of the seminar. So if we do this, it would be undertaking for the people we send to buy them two nights in a Wichita hotel and some of their meals. Like I noticed, it includes most meals. I'm not sure what that means exactly. But any rate, there are probably some meals involved. And also, they want everybody to have that book that's shown on there, The Common Good, that you can buy from Watermark Books website. So that's what I'm thinking about. I think the virtue here is, you know, I've been to a number of different leadership trainings over the years. Very widely in quality and how they resonated with me, but they've all been valuable one way or another. And if we have people going down to this and kind of acquire a common perspective and vocabulary as to what the Leadership Institute down there thinks we should be trying to do with ourselves as leaders. I'm sure they'll say it more eloquently than I just did, but anyway, that's what I'm after here. And so I wanted to know from you if, A, it's okay with you if the city enters in on this, and B, if any of you think you might be interested in going to this on any of these dates. I don't think we need firm commitments. I'm going to be talking to the grant administrator sometime, probably early part of next week. It's due on the thirtieth. I'm getting head counts from the school district and the college as to how many people they think might want to be there. Spoken to the county commissioners about this. I'll go talk to them on Monday and see if they're interested. So my department heads will be delighted to attend this as their annual staff training. We'll probably go down in groups of three or something like that. So if you think you might want to do it, don't necessarily need your answer on that this evening, but I probably need it by the first of the week, just in terms of, count me in probably. And it's not a firm commitment. We don't pay anything in advance of when people, well, we don't pay anyway until somebody shows up. Then we'd make a joint, one joint grant application involving all these entities. And if we have other space after I get all those head counts, I'll probably contact Milton Bale and Clyde,
Oh, good.
Glasgow, Jamestown, and see if there's anybody they want to send. Or if there's, could reserve a seat or two for them. I'm not sure we'll get to forty, but...
I was gonna say forty is a large number, but...
It is, yes, yes. I'm hearing, you know, a dozen or so from the other entities, so we might get close.
Well, I checked those dates. They're all like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday dates.
Is that what they do? It's gonna be tough for you. So if any of the commissioners are interested, let me know.
Yeah, you can always use leadership training.
So, yes, and frankly, some of the trainings I've lined up for our staff, our department has in the past, have been less than stellar, but this one we did last year was pretty good, so maybe this one will be. This is, they've been at this for years now, obviously, Leadership Institute, so hopefully they've got their, their program coming down with it. Are you familiar with it a little bit?
Roughly, I have a friend of mine aunt who's been real involved with them. I think, I think they do good work. I think it'd be a valuable time, especially if we can collaborate and coordinate with other entities. It could be a real neat opportunity to really work towards.
I noticed in their material, they talk about acquiring a common vocabulary, even just that. And also, we all come back and if somebody says, oh, we're gonna do a da-da-da, you have a bunch of people know what you're talking about.
I'd be interested in going and could make any of those dates work.
Okay, well, we'll see if we can get a grant then. And then let me see what else. Oh, direct, do you have the directional sign arrows? Okay, I'm pleased to announce that the Cloud County Tourism Committee has given us a grant of approximately two thousand dollars to build the directional arrow sign. I showed you pictures of a few meetings ago, to be erected on the east side of the plaza, just outside the fence on the sidewalk somewhere. So it's gonna be this twelve-foot tall black steel pole with all these arrows pointing different directions to different things. This is our list that we have right now, and it would be possible to add several more. Just thought I'd throw that up there, and I'll probably place this order first part of the week. So, well, if you see anything on there that, or have any thoughts on anyplace else that we might want to add to it, there's still time to do that.
Kind of like mesh.
Yes, exactly. And it's not New York, twelve thousand miles.
Right.
I would wonder about adding Second Street Park, Orchid Park, if we're gonna have City Park, but...
Yeah, we could do that.
Certainly don't have to, I mean...
People probably wouldn't be coming to town to go to Hood Park or Second Street Park, but...
We do have playground pool.
Yeah.
Four blocks there, so that's gonna point to City Park.
I follow that. Just throwing it out.
Somebody's trying to get it down so you have, just fits on the signs. I thought about pointing City Hall that way, you know. Anyway, well, that's kind of the general plan, and we'll place this order and probably have that signed up next month. I wouldn't be surprised. Wildflowers, I think I mentioned to you, if you have a chance, go look it up at Plum Road, where we have a riot of wildflowers going on right now. And I don't think we'd want to do exactly that at Twenty-First Street, but I've been thinking after seeing the results. First of all, there's a lot of different flowers up there. Summer and bloom. I wonder if next, if we have another year, if we're gonna see different blooming flowers up there. But I thought one thing we might think about doing was planting strips of wildflowers in the basin of the Twenty-First Street dam on either side of the ditch that winds through the bottom of it, designed in ditch, so just kind of have two rows of wildflowers going down there and see what that looks like. That wouldn't be very expensive.
Lon and I both went out and looked at it, and we weren't quite sure where to be looking. Is it where all the, like, sunflowers are?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the area?
Yeah, on the south side.
Okay, and then there's also some sunflowers on the north side, but the area you're actually talking about is on the south side?
That's what we planted.
And then that's right around where the drain is, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, just all the way on down there.
Yeah, because we were debating.
Which side you're looking at, yeah.
And I think most preennials are not gonna bloom the first year anyway, so next year.
There's a lot of growth down there. We did attract some monarch butterflies.
You know, at some point, it might not be bad. I mean, once it gets established, maybe put a small sign there too, saying what we've done.
Yes, so people know that, yeah, it's a good idea. We certainly did raise milkweed, yours will, because the milkweed all of a sudden. And that's about it for me this evening, unless you have anything else I can talk about.
I wanted to ask you a question. I know that some of the people who've, who are interested in pickleball have been in communication with you. And they seem to be quite rabidly interested in it.
Well, I haven't heard back from our pickleball commissioners. I just assumed they were out there doing their thing.
Yeah.
I told them they could have use of a tennis court, and so I don't know if they've done anything, does anybody know?
What is pickleball?
Well, it's like table tennis on a tennis court is the best way I can describe it.
It'd be kind of wiffle ball tennis with these big plastic rackets on it, then you size down a tennis court.
Well...
So, yeah, I haven't heard back from them. I thought they were just doing it somewhere.
They're, they're interested in having an area where they could have it permanently marked, where it's not gonna interfere with tennis. They're concerned about that.
And I, I suggested to them that they try it a time or two and see how many people show up, and then we can kind of go from there.
I think that's actually probably the best way. I mean, because they have the right to be on the tennis courts too, so...
I just let them give it a try. But yeah, it would be interesting, and...
They're doing it, I guess, every Tuesday morning. Yep.
Okay, where at?
Over at the City Park, at the lower tennis court.
What time of day are they doing it? No way to tell me.
Geez, you know, now you're getting into details that I can't... Jeannie Keizer is the, is the contact person.
Take your students there, Toby. Toby, take your students there.
I think in the morning, I think it's like around nine o'clock is when they're showing up. Well, yeah, I mean, my age is older.
The names of our commissioners are escaping me, dude.
Jeannie Keizer.
And Mrs. Horckman.
Yeah, Shelley.
Shelley. I'm sure they'd be glad to talk to you.
Oh, yeah.
Background here is they came, we're interested in starting this.
I mean, really old.
Okay, so yeah, so I guess we could kind of see how that goes, but then...
And you've ordered a net for them?
I told them we would.
Have you done it?
No, are they waiting for me?
Yeah, I think they think that it's already been ordered.
Well, we'll...
And, and also, they think that you've ordered some, well, the things that you hit the ball with and some balls.
Okay, well, we'll just see to that.
They don't have their own rackets?
Well, I don't think you call them a rack. They're paddles. I think that's what they are.
They have a set for two-hundred-and-fifty bucks that has a temporary net that stands and rackets and balls, so we will order pickleball.
Well, Jeannie wanted me to check on the status of the net, so I'll tell her that it's been ordered, right?
If you wait till tomorrow, then you'll be telling your...
I'm not gonna call her tonight.
Sorry, I thought we were gonna get back to you, so...
Okay. All right, great. Commissioner reports or comments?
A Concordia High School graduate from the class of nineteen fifty-eight is being inducted into the Kansas Sports Hall of Fame on October second. His name is Bill Dotson, and I think Bill may be in Concordia shortly after that October second induction. And I think it'd be nice maybe to have some type of a reception, and maybe that's even the wrong term to use, but at least maybe let him know that maybe he will be at the plaza at one o'clock, and anybody can kind of come around and waste some time, so... Okay, that sounds good. Very good. Okay, that sounds good, very good.
He could also have a proclamation on October fifth, depending that be the last in there or something.
Yeah, that'd be good.
What sport, Lyle?
He was a...
Runner.
Track, yes, he was a runner, track athlete. He was the first KU runner, and first Big Eight runner to run under four minutes in a mile.
Oh, wow.
And he was a five-time conference champion.
He was stuck in Concordia.
And, yeah, and, and there's even...
Maybe Jamestown.
A world record relay team that he was on, and it's an event that's not run much, it's an indoor two-mile relay in Chicago. And so, you know, it's pretty, uh, it's a world record. He was a good, good runner, so well-deserved recognition for him. Uh, that's when he was at KU, he graduated from, uh, Concordia High School in nineteen fifty-eight, and he broke Glenn Cunningham's high school record that, uh, at the KU relays, ran a four-twenty in nineteen fifty-eight, and so...
Cunningham was also a Kansas...
Yes, right, right, so... So anyway, maybe a little more about it, coming up.
We'll talk to you and see what we can say.
Okay, great, great.
His, his brother was a heck of a barber.
Yeah.
We heard that story. That's your hair, right?
When I was a little kid up to, to college.
Dawn.
Knew about Concordia before I met my wife.
Interesting.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I think, yeah.
Anybody else? Commissioners? Okay, staff comments?
And I left you guys all some papers. We talked last Thursday about the ambulance situation, so I just made up a quick PowerPoint to kind of tell you what we've done, what we're thinking, just so you guys understand where we're at. We went up to York today, myself and Rick Knutson, the captain, that is a lot more mechanically inclined than I am, and looked at the $10,000, seven-point-three diesel that's up in York. After we got to look at it, it's mechanically sound and a good truck, but when we started putting pencils to it, by the time we get it, fix the windshield, do the graphics, get the radios installed, uh, some of the radio wiring would have to be replaced to match up with the digital. We're gonna have about $17,000 in that truck. So what we've decided is we'd like to hold off on that. The plan we have, if we can go to the next slide, is this is the Ford Transit. Uh, they just finished painting the striping on it, it's not lettered yet. The plan is, and what we will do is, we're gonna pick this up the first week of October. They were able to push it forward, so we'll be picking it up in two weeks. We'll be using this for all first-out transfers. Any transfer we get, the first one, we'll be taking this, so it's gonna get a lot of road miles. And so we'll also be licensed through the state to be fourth out for nine-one calls.
Yeah, looks like you could go camping in it, too.
You could, it, I stretched it out a little bit from that...
Yeah, it looks like a stretch.
You need to park that in RV park.
Yeah, it's a little long.
Yeah, I was wondering that, it didn't quite look right.
I was trying to do this in a hurry after lunch. We can go to the next slide.
Oh.
This is Medic Five, this is our newest unit, we just got it out of Bud Rose Repair. They were able to repair the oil cooler and the injectors and everything that was broke on it. It is a six-point-oh after December. What we'd like to do is keep this as a second out. We have some concerns, it's got forty thousand miles. Uh, the history we're showing, we should get about thirty to forty thousand miles out of it before we have another major breakdown, if it follows in line with the other ones. So what we'd like to do is keep this as our second out, nine-one calls in town only. Main reason is we matched the Dodge, uh, new ambulants that we ordered to this box. So this would make our first out nine-one call, or our second out nine-one ambulance, be identical setups. Another next slide. Medic Three is a seven-point-three diesel, we'd like to keep this. Um, it's got about a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, but we want to keep it as our third out. We trust this engine, it's the reliable one, just like what we was looking up at York, and we want to keep it as third out and do standbys and stuff in it, just in case that six-oh does give us problems. We have this one. Next slide. Medic One is the one that's now back, and it's down behind the city shop, it's got the blown motor, it's out of service. We have sent pictures to Arrow, have not heard back. They're gonna send a guy to look at it besides the pictures. They're saying it ought, they'd box on it, it'll be worth about five to $6,000. So we'll have to see what they kind of say, and see what kind of a process we want to do to bid that out, or how we want to go about that. Next slide. Medic Two is also a six-oh, it's the third oldest ambulance, um, it's right at that eighty thousand miles. It's starting to put out the smoke, we're afraid it's, we're gonna lose it like we did Medic One. We want to just kind of baby it along here until after December, when we take possession of the ambulance we ordered back in earlier this year, and then we'll sell it after that.
And Eric, if I remember right, the seven-point-three motor is the one you prefer, right?
Yes. And the last slide, this is kind of the schematics of the new Dodge that we ordered earlier this year. We're gonna call it Medic Four. They're hoping, once we call them and start selling those blown engines, they've moved this up. They're expecting to have it done mid-December. They say we should have it here before Christmas. So, once we get that, that will become our first out for nine-one calls. So that's kind of the game plan that we've set forth, if you guys are okay with that. We appreciate, you know, the support you guys are giving us and looking at this, but when we put the pencil to it, we just don't feel it's the best use of the city funds.
Appreciate your discretion.
Your decision, that's very good, thanks.
So, have it for the Christmas rush.
Okay.
I would like to get a picture because in April, I totally forgot, and, so we don't have a picture on the website. So if I could do that.
I forgot to condition my hair.
I won't zoom in that much.
We'll darken that up for you on the...
Now, I don't remember if I told you about the League Supper that's gonna be here. I can't remember if I said anything. It'll be November first, which is, uh, I think it's a Tuesday, because I think it's the day before a Commission meeting.
It's the day after Halloween, that's Tuesday.
Yeah, okay. And it's probably, I'm guessing, starting six or six-thirty, they haven't got the particulars with me yet. We're gonna have it in here. Um, I think I'll try to borrow or rent some round tables, they work better than... The last time we had it here, we had, I think, two big, long tables, and it worked okay, but I think I'd rather have the individual tables. But I think for as many people as they say we'll typically have, this room will be big enough.
This is a good address for you to, uh, attend, if you have it before, they usually have somebody from their P-hog, South Townes, what's going on, right?
Uh, usually the league, what do they call it?
Executive?
Executive, yeah. It'll be here.
So do you need a, a number from us?
Not yet, probably, probably the middle of the month I will.
Okay. Okay.
One oh-four Lincoln Detail Shop out there that we own now on, uh, the highway for the turning lane that may be coming in the future, that we put the bid, we just accepted a bid on. That probably will be coming down here in the next couple of weeks, but we also have a Larson and Associates as a contract that's been, uh, ordered by the state to access onto that property to see what they can do for monitoring the underground tanks and finding them. But that's all part of the project, when we get that building down, then this company's gonna come in through the state. Department of KDHG, Department of Health and Environment, and find those tanks and get them out of there.
And that's something we don't actually pay for, right?
No.
Super fund.
That's good.
And it's gonna be helpful for us to take the building first, otherwise they might take part of the building to find... We don't know what, nobody knows where the tanks are, they might be under the building, or under the canopy. I've heard rumors that they were under the highway full of sand.
How, how, how big are they?
Nobody knows. There, Scott Lang's got opinions, he thinks based on the size of the dealer, probably just ten-thousand gallon tanks, aren't very big, but compared to today's standards, you know?
You know, Leroy Thalstrip might know where they're at. Cause he worked there and his dad owned it, and, I mean, just call it, see if he...
Well, yeah, I've had a lot of people tell me where they think they are.
Oh. So you don't need that information?
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, it's not, helpful. I, I swear that the state came in and filled them with sand when, when they widened the highway. And, but this, the guy, my contact, they says, we never do that, we take them out and get out of there, you know? So, anyway, that's...
Thank you, Bruno.
This last week and a half, we hauled sludge out at the wastewater plant to a newly acquired piece of property north of the plant, and there was a hundred and fifty-four loads.
Wow.
Which was, each load is forty-six hundred gallons, so that's over 700,000 gallons of sludge that they hauled. It took ninety-two man-hours and three hundred and sixty gallons of diesel. So, when we get this new upgrade and the screw press, that'll basically wipe that clean, cause of the 700,000 gallons, two percent of it is solids. So the screw press makes solids, so... It'll just be way easier to deal with.
And cheaper, too.
How, how many trips did he say?
Hundred and fifty-four loads. That's why we would like to keep it close to the plant. Just, cause he was, he was hauling thirty and forty loads a day. He, he was...
Just about as quick as he could get it, get it out.
Yeah, yeah. So, they're looking forward to that, cause we do this three, four times a year.
Wow.
So it gets kind of taxing.
I would be curious to have you actually put pencil and paper to that, and maybe next meeting, give us a dollar amount of what the cost is.
Although I, yeah, we don't really know what it's gonna entail with the screw press, what kind of polymers we're gonna have to buy to help make the cake.
You were asking about the cost of the...
So, so how much, how much is, how much does a gallon of diesel cost?
Uh, two hu...
Two sixty?
And how many, how many gallons did you say?
Three hundred and sixty gallons.
And you said ninety-two hours?
Yes.
At roughly what of?
Thirteen.
And that, can one person do it, pretty much?
Yeah, he was, he was doing it.
And it's, and it's basically pre-approved site by...
Yes, they had soil samples have to be taken before and after, and they get sent off to KDHG, and so...
So, two grand, twenty-two hundred, give or take?
Yeah.
We're doing that four times a year, so eight thousand dollars.
That includes the labor cost and the...
Labor and fuel.
And fuel.
Yeah. Well, you got it for equipment.
Yeah, the equipment, it's not just fuel.
Dollar tractor out there, and probably a forty thousand dollar tank.
We're gonna need the tractor when we're done with it.
Yeah, what I want to do is, there's a, I want to get basically a maneuver spreader to hook up to the back of the tractor.
We got plenty of maneuver spreaders around, but...
Yeah, and hook it up to the tractor.
Several sitting up here.
No.
None of us.
In case something happens to our screw press that we can't make the cake, we can still haul sludge.
Sure.
But, also, this week and next week, we are lifting and reading every meter in town manually to check for leaks, check pit conditions, see if there's any other discrepancies in the meter readings with the computer, so...
Can I make a request?
Sure. Don't need a pen?
Double-check the lids.
Yeah, yeah.
Make sure they get them on nice and secure.
Get them put back on. Well, the guys doing, doing this now have it, it's gonna be a learning experience.
Yeah, you can tell them my story, just as a point of emphasis.
So...
I'll make sure to clean up the meter then, make it a little easier to access, it's been a little neglected.
Put something on it, like a big old planner.
Make sure to do that.
Now, Jeremy, I have a question for you. What, um, on Eighteenth Street there, between, uh, the highway and over to probably Church Street, I noticed that they were boring small holes and going down into the streets, pretty close to the sewer. And this is, this was probably actually two, three weeks ago. What, what were they doing?
Eighteenth, where?
Um, well, between the highway, probably, uh, well, actually, uh, not even that. Um, I think Church Street. Is Church Street the one that goes out to the college?
Uh-uh, that's not Church, Church is over by the elementary.
Okay, Washington? Well, it, it was, like, one was right by the stop sign.
Republican, probably.
The Norse, well, it'd be the street east of, or two streets east of Republic. But anyhow, it seemed like that they were doing a small, yeah, it was city crew.
Probably...
What were they?
Probably looking for a service line or something. I, I didn't know about that, so... Usually...
There was about like four guys doing it.
Yeah. Oh, we were turning valves, we're gonna start, we've started turning all the valves in town, too, so they might have been sucking a valve out, the back truck. There's other uses for that machine than...
Turn the valve on, make trouble work.
Yeah.
See, now, now, they didn't have the, uh, truck with them, the, the back truck wasn't with them. Okay. No big deal, I was just cur- curious what they were doing, cause it didn't look like something you normally see them doing.
Did they have a, did they have the, a little trailer with the hydraulic machine?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah, they're turning valves.
Okay, okay, 'cause I know, well, they hit something.
Yeah, it's, it's a hydraulic compressor, and we have a key, uh, hydraulic valve turner, and it'll turn the valves for us.
Okay.
It'll put out a thousand PSI of torque, and, and where a person can only put 200 pounds of torque on a key, this thing will put a lot more, so it'll break them loose and turn them for us, 'cause you have to work them up and down to get all the stuff broke out of the valves. That's another thing we're gonna try to get accomplished. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you. Is that it for staff comments? All right. This is your time.
It's time to shine.
I just wanted to mention that the Police Department participated in a step enforcement. You drink, you drive, you lose, and that was from August eighteenth through September fifth. Uh, we had two officers that worked five shifts, and it's all overtime shifts. They conducted nineteen traffic stops, uh, six, wrote six tickets for speeding, one ticket for a child, uh, not seat-belted, um, and they caught one adult not wearing a seatbelt. Uh, there's a lot of miscellaneous, there were nine other miscellaneous citations issued, and they arrested one person for driving while suspended, but no DUIs, so that's a good sign. So, um, so it's gonna be probably the last step enforcement we do for the year, so just to let you know.
Appreciate you being up there.
Thank you.
Also glad there's only one non-seatbelt ticket. Kind of surprised by that, yeah?
Yeah. I'm kind of a frequent flyer in that department, but I haven't...
Our daughter makes sure that we're buckled.
Okay, then I guess we're ready for executive session?
Yes, and Mayor Commissars, I ask that we enter into an executive session to discuss confidential business data for fifteen minutes, inviting Ashley Hutchison and myself.
I'll move that commission recess into executive session for fifteen minutes for confidential business data, inviting Ashley and Mr. Ury.
Say it.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Tim and seconded by, moved by Lyle and seconded by Tim that we recess into executive session, uh, with confidence, for confidential business matter for fifteen minutes, inviting Ashley and Mr. Ury. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Gotta do something now, but...
Yeah, well, that's what she thought. Okay, no action was taken. This time we're, uh, ready to adjourn, uh, to a study session.
I move that we adjourn to a study session.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved second and, and third.
Right.
That we adjourn to a study session regarding the video screen use policy.
Yes, please. All those in favor? You say bottled water or Bud Light?
Boy, we lost everybody now, didn't we?
No, the tenant's still here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see you.
And Ashley, she must want more.
And Ashley, you, yeah, you count, too.
How was your, uh, son's birthday party the other night?
It wasn't a birthday party, it was an occasion that had for M K U V one of his essay contests.
Wow.
Uh, and it's a university by contest, put on by the law's department, so they had this reception, I probably went down there. So, it was Tuesday night, a bunch of philosophers.
That sounds like tons of fun. Did you bring one for me? I really don't want one.
Did you drive by the House of Gods, I mean Allenfield House?
It was in the neighborhood, it was, this is, uh, they had their honors program as a building right over there.
Okay, and, and that's changed a lot, hasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, uh, you know, like, tennis courts aren't there anymore, and?
New building going up down there. Okay, so, are we ready? Uh, I'm not, I gave you the memo, I don't wanna recite it all, but basically, uh, talking about what policy we should have for what kinds of things we're going to be willing to show on our video screen, uh, gets into some murky and kind of hot-button United States Supreme Court law on what's called public forum law. I kind of outlined it in the memo, if any of you had the heart, you had to deal with all this.
I don't know that I got that.
This was in the packet.
Yeah, it was in the packet, too.
Oh, okay, I was, I was having a hard time downloading my packet, so there you go.
So, uh, so basically, um, the issue is with public forums, any of our city parks is a public forum, meaning if you wanna have a get-together and wave signs and placards and chant, you can do it there, our sidewalks, by and large, are public sidewalks, downtown sidewalks, as long as you're not obstructing traffic, are public forums. And the city's ability to limit free speech in those areas is extremely limited. And all we can do is ask people to be orderly, stay out of traffic, that sort of thing. But there's a long-held traditional American and other right, ancient Greek right, I guess, uh, to, uh, assemble, considering their constitution. Congress will make, well, no law encouraging the right of people to peacefully assemble, so, uh, that's not quite, that's close enough. And when the gates are open at Broadway Plaza, it's a public park. When the gates are closed at Broadway Plaza and are intending to be keeping people, limiting access, then it gets a little more like, say, the Brown Grand. And what they, what the courts have called a, a limited public forum, where we have more say-so over what you can show there within limits. Uh, still rather limited limits. I think the case that I just noted in one line there that caught my eye was back in the, back in the late sixties, early seventies, when this was a hot item. The city of Chattanooga tried to prohibit the producers of the musical air from showing their, uh, rock and roll, which I can quote you some lyrics if you'd like to hear, uh, music, uh, at that, uh, downtown musical theater, and they lost, they couldn't keep that, and there was nudity and some drug use advertisement, certainly can play. So, uh, they could not prohibit that expression, free speech, so, uh, that kind of thing, I think we haven't gone into it at the Brown Grand, but when the gates are closed at Broadway Plaza, I think it's more like Brown Grand and like Park. The screen is a whole different thing, though, that's where we get to the point of having a policy. Uh, the screen is, uh, can be, I think, designated as a non-public forum, meaning we have much broader, uh, authority to say what can be shown there. We still have to be somewhat content neutral, but we can limit the types of content. That's what this policy is intended to do, so if we could see the policy, and, I'm sorry, but part of the reason for all this preface, if you wanna keep going, is there's a reason why this policy, from previous page back, and back, there you go. The reason for all this verbiage is what I just was talking about. We want to have a policy like this, I think, because if somebody does come in and want to put something on the screen that we think is untoward, that would not be appropriate, uh, it, we need to have a policy in place of note, look, here's what we're doing, here's why we're doing it, here's what we'll allow, we've got the written policy here, you're not within our policy, sorry. There are organizations that make it their business to look for public forums where they can advertise, uh, items that not everyone would find to be appropriate. Big case got decided by the Supreme Court or non-decided because of the existing four-to-four tie on the Supreme Court this summer, which was whether to review lower court decisions that had allowed the city of Seattle to prohibit what the Seattle authorities reasonably thought was a, kind of a coded, uh, anti-minorities sort of a message on their buses. Uh, and also, a lot of this stuff has come in recent years on what can be, uh, how much public bus companies can limit the kinds of things that you see advertised on the side of them or on the inside of them up there when you're sitting there. Look, then we're closer to that than anything else I could find. So, this policy is largely plagiarized from the Chicago Transit Authority's, uh, policy on what they will allow to show on their train and buses. And, uh, it resides what we're trying to do, which is promote local business, uh, and also to, uh, uh, raise revenue, although we don't expect the revenue to be earth-shaking, it's making some money, we'll have a report for you of that, one of these upcoming meetings. The local business, when I, I've heard some discussion back and forth between, uh, myself and Ashley as far as what's appropriate, and, uh, it, uh, basically is limited to, where am I at here? Up in the top, fundamental purpose and intent is to accept advertising as a means of assisting local economic development within the city of Concordia, promoting tourism in Cloud County is likely to benefit motels, restaurants, and retailers in Concordia, and providing an additional means of generating revenue. So, as to item one and two, what's local and what's promoting tourism in Cloud County, uh, as I think I explicated a little bit further in the policy, what I'm suggesting is we say, if you wanna have your, your commercial ad on the screen, you have to be operating a place of business in Concordia, because Concordia taxpayers paid for this screen, so if you're the car dealer in Salina, we're not gonna take your ad. Yes.
That's why I thought our signage that were, you had reference to a place in Clyde.
Uh-huh.
I think maybe, why couldn't we drop that?
Okay, oh, well, and the next thing is, what we had is the Clyde Watermelon Festival.
No, it, the, the signage earlier in the meeting.
The wayfinding sign said Clyde Arboretum had Jamestown well.
Other subject, so, okay, but let's just get on it. See, that sign was paid for by Cloud County Tourism.
Okay.
That's one reason they agreed to do it, was because we had all these, these other things, so, okay. This, our video screen was paid for by Concordia taxes. So, but, something like the Clyde Watermelon Festival, we can figure that we're probably getting some business out of that, uh, because people come to town.
Lodging.
But if you want to be the, uh, is there still a car dealer in Clyde, I don't know if George Motor?
Still.
Uh, okay, so we wouldn't take their ad, uh, because they're not a Concordia business. And, uh, there's kind of pros and cons on it, since they are in the county, but frankly, I can see more of an issue if, say, I'm a local businessperson and I'm driving to work and I see my competitor from Jamestown smiling at me, you know, on the screen, I might be wondering why he's on this screen that he didn't help pay for. So, we could do it either way, but that's my suggestion, that we just stick with, we'll do your festival, but we won't do your commercial ads unless you have an actual office here. I'll say bank, for example, they're good, they've got a bank here, so, um, bank in Miltonvale, they're not, you don't have, have a bank here. And, uh, so, that's something we discussed, and that's why it reads the way it does. If you wanna go to the next page, we can kind of get a little bit more into what we're doing and not doing. So, the advertising policy, starting there. So, there are classes of advertising, and again, on this, I'm really going very much by, uh, what I used from the Chicago Transit Authority's policy on their buses, which is very similar to what I saw from Seattle and other places I looked at their, their, uh, language, and I, I, from looking at the cases a little bit and seeing their policies, I can kind of see how they've been writing these policies into what the courts seem to be allowing and kind of justifying things, so there's a reason to kind of follow their language. Any rate, permitted content, there's commercial advertising, uh, and it's kind of defined there, distribution or availability of goods, services, food, entertainment, events, programs, transactions, donations, products, or property for commercial, non-commercial purposes. And, uh, then this is the line I think I was talking about, in furtherance of the city's intent to assist local economic development within the city of Concordia, only entities with operating business locations in Concordia may be the subject of commercial and promotional advertising. Governmental advertising is the next one, that's us, or the county, or, uh, the school district, anybody who wants to advertise something like that. And it is limited to, uh, governmental ed, entities headquartered in Concordia and governmental entities headquartered in other Cloud County locations when promoting events or programs intended to attract visitors to the county. So, uh, there you go to Clyde Watermelon Festival again. And it also says in there that advertising posted by the city of Concordia will not be charged a fee, so we'll have the fee discussion here in a little bit. And then public service announcements, this is the one where you can real quickly start imagining all kinds of things that, uh, we could be contacted and asked to put up, and there are national entities, like I said, that will, you know, cruise the internet looking for spots and then send you this ad and say, here, please run this for us. I don't know what medium they posted on, but I picked up from some of the online reading I do, that I think last week some town in New England had posters up for Black Guns Matter, you know, I don't think they'd probably take that one. So, uh, but more generally, we wouldn't take a candidate for city commission, or against a candidate for city commission, or vote yes on hospital bond, vote no, no, we're just gonna stay out of politics, local politics, state politics, and national politics. And anything, there's some language here, too, if you wanna go on to the next page. So, then you get, it's more easily phrased in terms of what we won't do, so for political advertisements promoting or opposing a political party, or promoting or opposing the election of any candidate or group of candidates for federal, state, judicial, or local government offices, advertisements that are political in nature or contain political messages, advertisements involving political or judicial figures, advertisements involving an issue that is political in nature in that it directly or indirectly implicates the action, you know, actually, prospective action or policies of a governmental entity. So, Planned Parenthood, you're out of luck, uh, and, uh, Brett Phelps, you're out of luck, too, uh, and, uh, the Right to Lifers are also under this, we wouldn't print any of those ads on our screen under this policy. Prohibited products, so, public issue, this is one where it's kind of, probably the most, uh, one where you can easily see something coming up. Advertisements expressing or advocating an opinion, position, or viewpoint on matters of public debate about economic, political, religious, or social issues, whether local, regional, national, or international. So, and these days, uh, that's a lot, I mean, what's not political these days? So, Greenpeace, you're probably out of luck, uh, and, uh, Citizens for Better Guns, you know, you're probably out of luck, too. Uh, so, anything along the political spectrum, if it's stating a point of view, uh, whatever that may be. We just kind of wanna be innocuous here and have happy little ads for businesses and base sales. Tobacco, uh, up to you, but, uh, the Chicago's policy that we're not gonna advertise tobacco. Ads or content for adult mature-rated films, sorry, everybody, but no X or N C films or ads for more mature audience or A R M video games on the screen, adult entertainment facility advertising, uh, anything we find to be false, misleading, or deceptive, anything that has material that might infringe on somebody's trademark or copyright, anything that comes up something that is illegal under state, local law, so no marijuana leaf signs, you know, going up. Uh, next page, please. Uh, profanity and violence, so inciting to violence, mutilating, disfiguring, intentional infliction of pain or violent action toward upon a person or animal. Uh, there was a line in the Chicago policy that after discussion with Ashley, we took out that said advertisements for firearms, because there's a lot of, you know, you could see somebody wanting to, or, or depictions of firearms in general. So, for example, uh, Ducks Unlimited, or a, a store that sells firearms, hunting rifles, you'd probably take their ad. But, uh, kind of the way I phrase it to myself is shooting ducks, yes, shooting people, no, so it kind of depends on what you want. Disparaging, this is kind of what Seattle hung its hat on, and then the ad it saw as disparaging or disrespectful to a person or group. We wouldn't take, you know, to a Ducks Clan, you're out of business here, uh, you know, so, uh, that kind of thing. Adverse to the city, so we're probably not going to run ads, uh, that complain about city policies on our own screen. We'll leave that to the newspaper. Insulting, same sort of thing, uh, I mean, we have well-known entities within this state that make it a point of being insulting to other groups. And harmful to the community, that one's pretty wide, uh, but, uh, kind of a catch-all there. So, uh, and also, there's additional requirement, if the ad doesn't already make a claim, we have, they have to say who it is. And there's this thing about teaser ads that I've never seen it adjusted to the policy, I could see how it happens, where you might have some ad and you don't really say who you are, but you can only do that for a short period of time, and they say who you are. So, then the procedure is, anybody that wants an ad has to take it through Jessica right now, uh, and if there's a question about any of this stuff, I get to say something. Uh, that's kind of what it boils down to. So, that's in a nutshell what the policy covers, and I think there's very good reasons for it, because if we get an objectionable ad requested and we don't have a policy to hang our hat on, uh, it's much easier to make trouble for us. So, the policy is designed to protect as much as can, might all never happen, rather think that's more likely the case, but these things do happen. I noted in my manual memo, you know, one of the landmark cases was a town with twenty-five thousand people.
I think this is a good idea, I think so.
Yeah.
Do we have a business in town now? And I can't think of any that we would not accept their ads.
I can't think of one.
Because we don't have any adult, and if we do have a gun dealer, I mean, that's okay, uh, but, uh.
Smoke shop?
Smoke shop.
Yeah.
Ah. Okay.
How many ads can it run a day?
Oh, well, it just depends on how many we have, um, so right now, I don't know how many she has right now, but they run fifty times a day with the amount we have, it started out, they ran about a hundred and ten times a day, so that's just how many ads she's got.
They guarantee a certain amount.
Yeah, a guaranteed fifty, I think she, I think they run a little bit more than that, like sixty-five, seventy.
And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, the, all I was gonna say is, and I can understand why we wanna keep city only, but after a while, if the city would drop, and then, I mean, this is income, I would think that we'd wanna then maybe expand that to county further out.
Something for another day, but, yeah, we're, you know, and this is all, I guess that's a point of emphasis here, uh, although we had some other material to rely on, I couldn't find an ad policy anywhere for publicly operated video screens. And we're, you know, out in front of people on this, so we're gonna learn things on this and on our operating policies and rental policies over the next year, so if we contemplate, we're gonna be changing things as we go along, putting possibly as a policy.
Because that amount of ads, I mean, this could generate some money.
In, in my mind, the, the money generated from advertising might negate the, the benefit to the community, might not. I mean, I don't, we're not gonna, points are points, dollars are dollars, and they all count, I, I absolutely appreciate that, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's probably something we could talk about.
It's gonna take my case and point, and, and I don't want to necessarily take, uh, criticism from one of our local car dealers after we run an ad for competitor in Salina.
Not over a matter of a hundred and some dollars.
Oh, no, I mean, and if he's writing an ad, then I would totally agree. But it got to a point where I don't wanna run an ad.
That's true.
And then I shouldn't be upset if someone else in the county would.
Advertising, so I shouldn't somebody else.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
But I agree, competitors running the same type products to the city shouldn't, shouldn't be allowed on there, as long as that, people in the city are running it.
And, so they're good, but, but then you, you might have somebody from Salina that's, you know. And, so they're good, but then, you might have somebody from Salina that's, you know, selling something nobody sells here, but still, where do you start making that decision?
Yeah.
Which gets me to the fee part, because this ends up saying, there'll be a fee schedule, and I think we put that in the packet also. By the way, Lyle asked for printed copies of our signup stuff, so we'll get those to you. Maybe we don't have that, or-
Keem is an attachment.
Keem is an email.
Yeah, it did, right.
Well, look, I think six months was, what, $760, if it sounded right.
I can get to it pretty quickly, Jim.
While, while we're looking for this, well, maybe we should wait for that, but what, where is there some opportunity, or where are we with Relay for Life, things that are-
Well, where your committee is, because we talked about all this, is, you know, then where do you start drawing those ones? We'll draw them wherever you want, but it's 25 bucks. So, our preference would be to stick by our policy on that, and we have had organizations quite willing to pay it. So, whatever you think, but if we don't charge everybody, then who does? If he doesn't, you get into a line there real quick.
I think if, that's a fundraiser. And, you know, what makes sense to me is that if you take money in, then you have to, we expect that you would charge.
And I think that with, I think the reality is with Relay for Life, very little of those fundraising dollars stay in Cloud County. So, I think, I think the press was unfortunate, but, but it did raise a good question if there's a, so I guess what, you're shaking your head.
A private donor paid for that, paid for advertising for that entity, I checked, I would have paid it.
What I was thinking is, fresh perspectives counseling could have, I mean, so I'm wondering if, if a way to, so I guess it brought up more of a question than really wanting to address that, but I wonder if there'd be some effort to put together a list of businesses, or maybe people already know that.
They might be willing to pay it, yeah.
You know, and so when we come, yes, there is a fee, we do have to charge it, but you might talk with Chuck, or you might talk with Tim, or this business owner, that business owner, they've been known to do this, and maybe have like a little pool of folks to where we can maintain that, that consistency there. But there might be a pool of donors that would be willing to step up for some sort of ad, and that, that might-
I just thought it was a kind of a cheap shot. I mean, $25, we all make charitable contributions to your church or wherever, and that could have been that person's, or whoever, finding somebody.
Yeah, absolutely, everyone.
I just, we have to charge.
Blasphemy Jessica specifically.
We're paying, you know, for that equipment, we're paying for the electricity, we're paying, you know, I mean, there's just to have it maintained and to be operated. So, I think we need to charge, I don't think there should be any exemptions.
Yeah, well, it's like me.
No matter how charitable it sounds, you know, there's going to be expenses to it, so.
You know, we do that crunch for a cause, and there's, you know, I would not expect you guys to put, because my restaurant would be benefiting.
Yeah, and that's one part of it, too, because some of these do have titans, which are entirely legitimate, legitimate and praiseworthy, but then at that point, it's kind of, it does have a commercial aspect, so.
And we even, you know, up above, you know, the ad, this ad being paid for by, you know, and then you can have that pool of folks that want to, you know, to do it, and be recognized that they've done it, but anyway, I guess, complain, you're going to complain.
But even that, you got to be careful, because then the other side will retire, then we get into a back and forth. I mean, let's run the top of the subject, pro-life, and then they, the people, against that. So, you go on one side, then you're going to have to all go-
No, but it was right next to that, but hold on that one for a second.
Right, and that's no good.
That's not good.
Hold on that one for a second, be the other, okay. All right, so here's our form, you found it, thank you. So, there's our form, you want to get to the fee part? Keep going, keep going, okay, so. That's the ad, that's just for our signup for the plaza, okay. We have another one, I don't know if we have it here.
Fee for the ad.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, bear with us, I was going to mention to you, anyway. I was going to mention to you, anyway, if you haven't already, you might want to take a look at the website for the Broadway Plaza, it's been redone, looks pretty crisp, Jessica did it.
I'll tell you what, we own the business, and we have the right to refuse service, and don't come back.
I think that's what we have to do.
I agree.
Why do you want to do business with a place that's going to piss off anyone?
Well, it's because they-
Okay, so here's our website. Before we get there, I want to show them the graphics on the bottom of that, if you want to scroll up. This is a particular, Jessica took a photograph and turned that into this, this kind of looks like a drawing. That's what's on the front page of the website, if you have a chance to look at it, you can't quite see it all here, but it really looks nice, but she did it. So, we can go back to business here, then. I want to advertise on the screen, there you go. So, click on weekly advertising application. So, this is, this is the one, this is, here's your 25 bucks a week. Business or personal ad, pay a lot, so we've had some anniversaries and birthdays and stuff, too.
$25 is so reasonable.
Well, that's, I, I, yeah, I think, I think-
It's the cheapest advertising in town.
That gives you a week's worth of that cycle that we go through.
Yeah.
I mean, we even put it out for the plan we're doing, we spent the $25, put it on there.
And I'll, it would not be a good idea to have some donors, but I think anybody that really wanted to could go to somebody, hey, I need 25 bucks, you want to give me that?
Well, and I don't know why that didn't happen to begin with, but it just was an opportunity to talk about it.
I mean, honestly, I mean, for $25 a week, if we had a crunch for a cause, that is something I would actually suggest to whoever we're doing the cause for, to spend that $25.
Money well spent.
So, thank you, we will just stick by that, it's three, much easier just to tell everybody.
So, 30 bucks if they create the ad, wow, so for $5, somebody will create the ad for them.
Actually, no, it's, it's 10 bucks if they were having to edit, and 30 bucks if we're making the ad, right?
On top of the 25.
On top of the 25, okay.
But that's a one-time charge, right, Ashley?
Yeah, she ends up having to create and all, that's-
Well, because like the ad-
Still, that's 30 bucks we'll spend.
She was looking at, for me, she, she had to do some editing on it, so, so there would be a charge for that, right?
Other than that, as far as the plaza goes, we are ready to roll, and we're going to open the gates noon on Friday. Flash ad officially tried out by the Hudson and Sheldon yesterday. Is going to be open from noon on.
I don't know that I've received the email, but-
Did the tower get installed?
The what?
The tower, the plugins for, to charge your phone?
No, it's probably not going to get installed, I don't think they have it yet.
Okay, all right.
Did the flag plaque get fixed?
Yes, in case you haven't, I think I emailed you, Ms. Curl, Ms. Baxton's first name, and she wasn't pleased. We're actually going to have it fixed in time for Friday.
Good.
I don't, I don't know if you guys received the email.
I don't know, it was me, me and me, all of us.
I, I haven't, but I'm assuming that there's a table reserved for commissioners for Friday evening, I just haven't received the email.
Ashley had a good suggestion, to bring a lawn chair or something.
Yeah, bring your own, bring your own table, Chuck.
I'm, I'm somebody.
We're not sure who.
Right.
Bathroom's a function, right?
I don't think so.
Show up at 2:00, reserve a table.
People-
Somebody wrote it for me so that it will be-